Welcome to the Tuesday, October 15th, 2017, Southbridge School Committee Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Ms. Dubal.
Present.
Mr. Lozlo.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Ms. Palauquin.
Excused.
Ms. Ryan.
Present.
Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Six present, one excused.
Thank you. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States is America. Together we protect our citizens. One nation, one empire. We live as one. Let me be your justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forth and speak to the school committee, I would ask you to state your name and address.
I'm from Shea, I'm from Southbridge. I'd like to talk to the school committee today about libraries. It's come to my attention that the libraries at Eastford Road, West Street, and Charlton Street are going to be closed for this year. For years, this school committee has worked very, very hard and spent a lot of the taxpayers' money to build an adequate collection for our students so that they have ready access to a wide number of genres of books that they can take home, read with their parents, and bring back. Our beginning readers need to read as much as they can, as often as they can. Nothing else works to improve reading scores except reading, reading, reading. And this year, those books will sit idle. And you know what happens whenever anything in the school system or anywhere else in the world just sits idle, it walks away. And so, we're in real danger not only of not having our students have this access to bring books home, but also to have our collections walk away on us. It was in the original budget that you people voted for, and at some point, the decision was made to go with technology. Now, technology is extremely important, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, but on the lower levels, our two most serious issues are our math scores and our reading scores. And I think the effort should be put into keeping everything we can for reading. Now, Southbridge has a great library. We have a wonderful library downtown, but unfortunately, not all of our students have access to that library due to reasons of transportation and time and all of those other issues. In normal, modern families, we need books that they can take home and read, bring back, and get other books. So, if someplace in your hearts, in your budget, in your life, you can find a way to squeeze the libraries back in, it would be excellent for our students. Thank you.
I'd just like to have a point of clarification. The school committee does not vote on the budget. We did not, we were not responsible for removing anything or putting anything into the budget. In fact, we received the budget about five minutes prior to a meeting. I'm going to say in May or June, so it's certainly concerned. And I want all the parents and anybody in this community who has concerns to come to these meetings and inform us. Dr. Johnston, a current receiver, is not an unreasonable individual. If we know something, I'm more than happy, or anybody on this committee is more than happy, to meet with Dr. Johnston and see if there can't be some positive resolution. I agree wholeheartedly with the need for libraries in our schools. I know the value. I've worked in our schools for a long time. I want to thank you for coming forward and enlightening us because I was not aware of that until this evening. Thank you. Ms. Lozlo?
Shea, you know as well as I know, we've worked together on libraries in the past. And we've always put kids first, and we tried to strive for excellence, and that was our saying. I heard this, and I was angered. It upset me when we turned around and we renovate the bank at the old high school for administration for a receptionist, but we cut librarians. When it comes to education, you have to weigh a receptionist or a librarian. I think anybody with common sense can put that together and say, "That librarian's more important. The teacher is more important." If budgets get tight, prioritization comes forward. Renovating the old bank for a receptionist for the high-paid help management team, I have a big problem with. But again, Mr. Bishop's point of clarification on his, you know, what our role is under this receivership, and this is why I was never in favor of the receivership in the first place, but I share your pain. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan?
Thank you. Actually, Shea, you had raised this concern with me, and I had brought it to the attention when I first met with Mr. Johnston. And it's unfortunate, when we were sitting on EHS, I didn't, I don't believe either one of us saw this when we first got it, because we got it a week before. And I've been working closely with Mr. Johnston to really make sure that we do have librarians in place. So, again, thank you for bringing it to the attention of the full committee. And I hope Mr. Johnston and their receivership team will take your concerns to heart and make those adjustments.
It was on the last budget that we saw in the subcommittee, because that's, reading and library are, you know, my primary interest. So, as the day when Mr. Bishop saw it for the first time, the first thing he looked at is, "Where are the principals' administrative salaries?" Because he knew right where to look. I knew right where to look for the libraries and for the reading teachers. And it was there. And at some point, they made the change to technology, and it can't fault technology, and it can't even fault a receptionist because that building needs someone right there when you come in. But I still think our priorities should be putting books in children's hands, bringing them into the homes, because our kids do not all come from what one of my professors euphemistically called "a language-rich environment." Our kids don't see books. They don't see magazines. They don't see newspapers.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to comment? Thank you, Ms. Shea, for sharing that information with us. Anyone else would like to address the committee this evening?
I don't know if this is right. I work at the library in town, so I love what you just said about books. Kathy LaPryori, 51, Mark Avenue. My grandson had the most wonderful teacher in first grade this past year, Jennifer Creelman. And I feel his second-grade teacher is going to have very big shoes to fill. He told me that she taught with education and was fun. That's big. I heard that some of the other teachers were intimidated by her, I guess, but I think it's because she had confidence and jumped right into her job, and she got to know each child and their likes, and she was, I can't say enough about her. She was someone who grew up here, moved away for a short time, and then moved back hoping to make a difference. And she did. She was let go and has found another job elsewhere, and someone is getting a real big treat. This is the type of teacher we let go. I just, I don't understand. I don't know who makes the final decisions about this, but it doesn't make any sense to me. Mr. Lozlo and Mr. Bishop, I'm hoping that you guys who have always been here for us in Southbridge will stay and keep fighting for our kids. You've been here for a long time, and it's obvious that you care a lot. This foolishness cannot last forever. The state came in to fix us all up. They were going to stop the revolving door. They set up their own revolving door. How's that working out for us? Not very well. There are many kids still leaving our school system at a big cost to the town. That stability, I guess. I'm a die-hard Town of Southbridge person. I drive people crazy about it. I stick by the schools. Things are going to get better, and I'm not ready to give up, and I hope that you won't either. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else in the public like to address the school committee Could you state your name and address, sir?
My name is Paul Zotos. I live at 60 Charlton Street, and I'm a graduate of Southbridge High School. And I read a book a week. I worked for Barnes &amp; Noble for 10 years. I know a lot about books. But I'm not here to talk about books tonight. I agree with everything that's been said. I've got some issues. One of them's this microphone. I've got a lot of issues. Two issues I'll bring up tonight. And I want some answers. I don't know you. How are you? Dr. Johnson? Johnston?
Johnston.
Johnston, thank you. You're my man. You're our man. These people I know very well. I'm good friends with all of them. I was the cable access director, department head, clerk, we're not sure what I was. But I ran the cable office for 15 years. And we gave a lot of money to the school to have a three-camera studio, a lot of money, to build a three-camera studio at Southbridge High. And I wanted it ready. I wired it, got the money, got the equipment. In that little room over there, I was told by Superintendent Ellie that if we gave him $150,000, he'd have a real certified video teacher for me. So, it wasn't my money, but I brought the issue forward. The cable committee voted for it. We had a big argument. Are we going to have a teacher? I didn't want a studio up there without a certified teacher to teach three-camera television, all right? Before I did that, I spent 10 years. I spent, yeah, see, there's something wrong with these mics. You're going to tell Paul Zotos how close to get to a mic? Can you imagine? You know how ridiculous that is? I bought the mic, all right? But somebody doesn't know how to use it. And I wanted to teach, I wanted that taught at Southbridge High. Because when I went to Southbridge High, we had black-and-white TV, you know? And so, I had to go all the way to Hollywood to learn how to build television studios. And I came back here, and I built one. This is it. And then I gave the money to build another one at Southbridge High, and it's not there. There's a server, there's some cameras, there's a computer, but it's not a television studio. You're going to have three-camera television studio, and it's got to be functioning with monitors and everything you need to teach it, and it would have been wonderful. It took me 10 years to get the channel back. We're supposed to have three channels in Southbridge: public, education, and government. It took me 10 years to get the school channel back, because the former counselors wanted to watch football out of Hartford. So, they shut down the Channel 11 educational channel, and this town watched football. Why, our kids failed. And when I came back to town, it took me 10 years, 11 years, to get the channel back through Charter. And Charter finally gave it back. The thing's blank now. 11 years of hard work, $150,000, and the channel is black. Nothing on. And I don't mean lunch menus and football games. Education. It says "education." Simple word for you guys to understand. One word. Education. Channel. And I wanted to educate. Why aren't you using that now? And if you don't know what to put on, film the classrooms and put it on TV. If they didn't get it the first time, maybe if they watch it three times, like I Love Lucy, they'll memorize it. All right? You can learn more watching Jeopardy and Wheel of Fortune than you can on our education channel. Have I run out of time?
You have run out of time, Mr. Zotos. I appreciate your time.
I need five more minutes. That was issue number one.
That was issue number one. All right.
I need five more minutes for issue number two.
Before you continue.
There's no line behind me.
Before you continue, I will comment that.
I don't have any kids. I am a kid.
What you said about the cable television and the access, it's all true. I was here through it all. And when we built the new high school, which I was a very big part of, we did include studio space up there. As you know, I left prior to the official opening of that building, and I don't think that student ever came to fruition. But you're right, the space was allocated, the money was there, so.
It's gone.
You know, it's like, if somebody's not watching it, something goes. Mr. Lozlo?
Just, Mr. Bishop, to follow up your point, I didn't leave. I stayed. I was chairman of the building committee. There was a studio. There was actually a teacher. There's no certification at the state level for this position, so what they tried to do is, is work it in. The studio had three cameras, the green room. We were supposed to run the education channel out of the new high school. We accessed other live, we could go live right out of Southbridge High.
Yeah.
Again, the deterioration, the implosion of this district, when we opened up that new middle high school, and they went to a different management scheme, which ended up coming back to what we have now, they blew up the management of that school, and it's been sailing south since.
I understand.
Now, everybody's trying to get their footing and get things back together. The state has showed up a year ago. It's worse now than it was when they got here. So, we have a lot of work ahead. Russ Johnson is a very fine gentleman.
I believe it.
The only thing I can tell you is, the furniture that was supposed to be put into the common areas, nothing got done once they imploded the district.
Thank you, Mr. Lozlo. Hang on one second, please. Did you have something to add to this?
No, I would just, I would like to move to allow Mr. Lozlo three more minutes.
All right. It's been, a motion has been set forth to allow Mr. Zotos five more minutes.
Second!
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos.
I love you. So, I forget where I was. So, you know, forget about what I want. It's the most amazing tool in the world to educate with. You have a television and a camera that goes into every home in Southbridge, hopefully, you know? And if we can't, we can get it there, you know? It's such an educational tool. Everything we've learned, we probably learned from television, and we don't even realize it yet. But Southbridge, they're not sure yet, you know? So, you've got the greatest educational tool in your hands, and people like me, they're still willing to do something about it. I'm still willing to build a studio up there if you get me the money. If you can find my money, I'll be willing to build it for free. I built this one for free. I didn't charge the town anything to build this one. So, I'll be willing to build you a studio for free if you can find me the money. And I'll be willing to teach video up there, just like I did here and everywhere I've gone in my whole life. I taught guitar and music for 30 years, and I've taught video for 15 years. My fans are calling me. So, I'll do it again if I have to, or get a teacher. But you got me. And I can build, I built this one in 30 days. I can build yours in 30 days. You want to wait? You want to wait 30 days? You'll be back in 30 days to have this meeting, and I could have the studio built.
Thank you, Paul. I'll certainly have a discussion with the receiver about the issue and see if we can't come to some expedited resolution. But it is another piece of the pie that is a valuable part for us.
It's the piece.
Thank you.
It's the piece. My second question is, I'll make this one real short, because I know you don't have an answer for us. But I'm tired of the mystery of what happened at Southbridge High Middle School. I'm tired of the mystery, all right? We had $25 million, and I think the town should know what happened, all right? It shouldn't be a mystery that this school committee, these wonderful people, failed, and somehow the state didn't fail. And now, Mr. Bishop told us the last meeting that he found out what happened. I think I got a good idea what happened, but I'd rather hear it from you. So, you can tell us what happened, or I'll give you till next month to tell us. I'm not kidding, Mr. Johnson. I can tell you right now, if you want to know, if you want me to. Or, I'll give you 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos.
And you can tell us what happened with the receiver and the money and cable, and I'll be back here in 30 days with the answer, if you don't.
Thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Zotos.
I'm being very, very nice.
I'm going to cut you off at this time, Mr. Zotos.
You cut me off.
Thank you.
The whole world cuts me off.
We're going to move on to the meeting. Thank you.
And yet, no one really can. All right, so.
Okay.
I offered my, I offered my.
I know where to find you.
And you know where to find me. And I have a question, and I'd like it answered tonight or in 30 days.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody. I'll be right out here.
Thank you.
I'm not going too far. I'm reading John Grisham's new book. Very good. You ought to get it.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, moving right along to item number four. Last meeting, we had nominations for vice chair of the school committee. We had, two members were nominated. We had an even number of members here, and it ended up in a tie. At this time, I'd like to ask a revote.
Mr. Bishop, I'd like to withdraw my name from consideration.
Ms. Ryan would like to withdraw her name from consideration. I don't know, that's a motion, or do I have to have a motion?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Lozlo.
If, it's a withdrawal of the nomination, he's not, she, he's not accepting, she's not accepting the nomination, so you have to vote the name that is left that's in nomination, because last meeting, you closed off nominations, so nobody else can be nominated.
Right.
But if Jackie says she's out, then you have to vote on just Ray Page.
Okay. All right, Max, can we have a roll call on Dr. Page, please?
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Dubal.
Yes.
Mr. Lozlo.
Page.
Dr. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Page.
Mr. Thomo.
Mr. Page.
Six for Dr. Page.
Thank you. I'd like to move this right along. We have two sets of minutes of the meetings on the item five. We do not vote on these, but if anybody looked through them, did you find any errors, omissions, inaccuracies that you'd like corrected for the record? Anybody have anything for the first one on the reorganizational meeting of July 18th? If not, we'll move on to the monthly meeting of July 18th. Anybody have any issues, concerns, corrections, additions, deletions? No? If not, I guess we can send those forward to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Johnson at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. What we'd like to put on the agenda first tonight for Under New Business is an out-of-state field trip travel request. And we're very pleased to have our music director from the high school with us this evening, who can introduce himself and has a short presentation provided for us.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Tomasi, and I am the band director at the high school. We are planning an out-of-state trip for next April 2018 to Myrtle Beach. We will be departing Wednesday, April 11th, at 7:00 PM. This is the Wednesday before our April break. Students will miss the Thursday and Friday, and we will come back Monday morning, April 11th, of our April break in the morning. We are planning to bus overnight, and we are bussing with the bus company, U.S. Coachways, and we are using two bus drivers, so we do not have to lodge an extra night. The tour company we are using is called FiestaVal. Southbridge High School has been working with them for many decades, as back to Mr. Bishop was the band director of the high school. This is an all-inclusive program that coordinates the festival experience, the hotel, and the accommodations. The purpose of this trip is to have our students in the high school band perform and have a clinic and feedback with music educators in the area. We will also be able to hear other ensembles from the eastern seaboard of the United States and see how they perform, how they conduct themselves, and we can learn as much from the other ensembles we see as well from the clinic. We will be taking approximately 30 students, final numbers for this year's ensemble, even though we are in the middle of this year's band camp, are not finalized. We will be having about six chaperones, and the cost of this district is $0.00. The Band Parents Association, as well as the high school band, is in a two-year fundraising process that we're in the middle of, and there will be no costs to the district whatsoever. We are covering it entirely. That's all I have, so if you have any questions for me, I'm willing to answer them.
So, Mr. Bishop and members of the committee, what I wanted to do is to bring back the field trip process for informing the board of the existence of out-of-state field trips. I know in my previous role as superintendent, I often found it helpful for my board, for my committee, to ask questions about any proposal, just to make sure that we really keep the safety of our students paramount. And so, while not unlike the minutes, there won't be a vote on this tonight, I certainly welcome any input, any questions, any concerns about a request like this or any other. We have a couple more coming before you in September that we really just want to hear your thoughts on. And so, I wanted to introduce to you why we are bringing this before you tonight.
Well, as a longtime music educator, I have used FiestaVal many, many times. Excellent reputation. They've always served us well. I'm delighted to see that you're going to have two bus drivers to alleviate the, sometimes we would push the envelope on that issue. So, that's great, that's a nice safety feature that's included. Dr. Tabaisian, I've met him and worked, and a few times, he's doing a great job with our high school band. I'm in full support of this, although we don't have a vote. If there's anything I can, if you want to call me, I know this is probably one of your first trips with something like this, do not hesitate to call me. I'll give you some ideas. I could give you, you know, on the bussing issue, you know, anything you need. And I'm looking forward to a great trip for these kids.
Thank you.
I am so happy to hear this. This is wonderful news for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for documentation?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And our next meeting date will be September 12th at 7:00 PM.
Sounds good. Citizens Forum, anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward this Okay. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring forward? Mr. Lozlo?
Yeah, I have some great concerns about the budget. I know I stopped in to talk to Dr. Johnston about the budget and the whole, how do I describe, the whole implosion of our management team from the state, the receiver on down to the, to the directors. And it was, it concerns me. Everybody in town's wondering what happened. I guess we're going to continue to wonder. The thing that bothers me probably the most, I look beyond the personalities and look into the process. And I think that, you know, the budget that's been put together in the past year was, I thought, probably not sustainable. And I think that we continue to create a budget that, once it's handed over, it, I don't know if it's sustainable. And I've done a few of these budgets, town budgets, in school. What I would like to do is suggest, I have some suggestions. I would suggest a performance-based audit under the hospice and monitoring of the Joint Legislative Education Committee of the legislature. What I think we have to do, because of this turnaround program and this receivership design, it doesn't seem to work here. We're a small, maybe it works in the big cities, but we've created a terrible revolving door. And people ask themselves, are we better off now than a year ago? And the answer is very simple. No, it's not. You hear it from some of the citizens. I think one of the designs, this would be a performance-based audit. In other words, you're getting your money's worth in the performance of the money being spent. It's different than a financial audit where this money went here, we used it for that, and it can be traced. But I do not feel comfortable with the books at this point going forward. I would also like to suggest, when I picked up the budget, and we picked it up, it was given to us five minutes before the last meeting. I turned around and I looked, and I know I talked with a couple of the members, and they had an account unclassified for over $1,026,000. And I'm sitting there going, "Unclassified? I've never heard that before." So, what I did was, I called some financial people in other districts, and they said, "No, they've never heard of it." So, I said, "Oh." And then I found another line item that has $2 million paid to DSC for services. And then I turned around, and I said, "We paid $2 million for the performance in the past year? I've got a problem with what we're looking at here." So, for me, I'm looking at a district that should probably look at, Dr. Johnston, if the state, or if we go to the legislature and try and get something changed where we can turn around as a district through you and create a five-year contract with a receiver, and we stay in receivership for two years, and then we wean the new receiver into a superintendency. I'm suggesting this because I'm a builder, and the only thing I see is, nobody has any faith in what happened, and not much faith moving forward. But if the townspeople, if its elected officials see that there's actually light at the end of the tunnel, if we're in wait, we're going to be in two years, and then we're going to keep the same person, and they can just flow into the superintendency and sign this five-year contract. The town makes a commitment, the state makes a commitment, and we all get behind this person, and we know we're getting this district back, and we're going to get it back in good shape, because we're all going to work together with the team concept. I think that is the best design. If we go with what's going on in Lawrence and Holyoke, the revolving door continues there. We see it at school spring. It seems to be there are bigger communities than us. So. So I look at it as maybe nobody's, you know, really keeping the pulse. But in Southbridge, something happens, everybody talks about it. Everybody knows what's going on with this, that, and the other thing. So I really think that whatever the design is to, if there is a light at the end of the tunnel where we know that the receivership is going to end and the superintendency is going to pick up, I mean, before this happened, we invited the state to be on the search committee and we were turned down. We really do want to turn this district around us. And I think that the council wants it. I mean, the council has thrown money at the school district and this district has wasted it. I think if a council told me today, I don't want to put any more money in the dark hole, I probably wouldn't blame the councilors. We have to show, and I know we don't have control over it, the state does, we have to show in good faith. A million dollars and unclassified, if I was a councilor, that would have been the first account I went after. How can you not label the money that you're spending that I'm giving you? And I think that we have to work on that because trust has to be built, just like this district has to be rebuilt. Because of the revolving door, and it's worse now than ever before, we need to gain the trust of our employees, create a working environment where they want to stay here, where kids want to go to school. We don't have that right now, but I'm willing to work on that. I do have a little bit of experience with this. I just wish we had more input where we could have more of a mind meld instead of an us-in-them philosophy. Now, it's very easy to kick the people that are already gone, I'm not interested in doing that. They failed, we give them an F. Down the road they went. Now we have to rebuild this. So just a couple of suggestions, knowing the financing and not do financing like they did, the state did in the last year, where all these wages, I mean, you know, you've got a receiver that's getting paid $15,000 less than Worcester. Look at the size of Worcester, look at us. You've got salaries up in the top management that would not be sustainable if the council and the landfill closed, we had a budget struggle and we had to take our percentage of it. I've been through this. The first thing you're going to do is start cutting those big positions and cutting small positions in sports and it would be very painful. So I think what we do from here on out has to be constructed in a way where it can be maintained once it's handed off. Right now, we don't have that and I think that that's something we have to work towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazzo. Ms. Ryan?
I was going to save this for the joint meeting, but considering Member Lazzo's comments, I guess this would be appropriate time to jump on to this. There has to be more transparency between the state and the committee. The fact of the matter is that the EHS got more time with this budget than the school committee did and that's not right. We had two weeks with this budget. We had one budget that was given to us and then we had the actual book given to us on EHS well before, and the school committee getting it five minutes before is not appropriate. I appreciate the fact that the receiver is now starting to put some of the normalcy of a school committee, like the field trip request, bringing that to us. We need to do more to get this committee more involved in the process of what's happening in the district. It's why when my first meeting with you, I called for the reestablishment of subcommittees. We need to, as a committee, understand what's happening in this district at a micro level because right now we just don't. A lot of this is happening behind the scenes and it's sad that a subcommittee for the town council knows more about what's going on in the district, knows what's going on in the budget process than this committee does. And I just don't see it as appropriate. I was going to save this, but I would echo Member Lazzo's comments. There has to be more transparency here and there has to be more member involvement.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Anyone else on the committee? Anyone else on the committee? I too have a prepared statement, but it's rather lengthy. I was going to read it. I'm not seeing, to the town, could I just ask Mrs. Clements? Mrs. Clements, I hate to put you on the spot. Will we be able to speak at the meeting late, coming up right after this one? Will we be able to ask questions? Okay, thank you. I do want to comment on Mr. Lazzo's request for independent art. I hope all the town councils will hear me loud and clear on this. I requested under the Freedom of Information Act documents pertaining to a consultant firm that was used by the district last year. I received a speedy response from the Boston Law Firm of Morgan, Brown &amp; Joy, which is, I believe, either Desi's lawyer or our school district's lawyer at this point. I don't know. When I totaled up all of the invoices that I requested, it came to $65,625. Doing due diligence, I requested the same information under the Freedom of Information Act and I had to pay for it. As the chairman of the school committee, I had to take money out of my pocket to get the records, it wasn't a lot of money, to get the records from our town accountant to protect our taxpayers. That's something we have to talk about also. But when I did get the information from Ms. Harnoyes, the actual number that we paid this consultant firm was $112,375, nearly double what I was told. I have serious issues. I don't want to say they did it intentional. I don't want to say, but when I, under the Freedom of Information Act, I ask for information and I get that type of, it's either incompetence or deliberately trying to not be straightforward. I certainly, I insist, and I'm going to insist every day, that the town council demand that we bring in an external auditing firm to find out where the $30 million or however much it was we expended last year went. I think the taxpayers of this town, the late commissioner sat on that stage at 25 Cole Ave and told us all, our failures are not based on dollars. Buzz Nimbokoff sat in this chamber and told us, our failures are not based on dollars. I want to know where all our dollars are going and every taxpayer in this town. It's not Desi that's paying $30 million, it's the taxpayers in this community and you can ride around and know that this is not a wealthy community. I'm furious. I'm going to be, I was going to read this this evening, I'm going to rework it and I'm going to be submitting a letter to the editor of both the Telegram and the Globe. The people have to know what's going on here. I understand Dr. Johnston met with Desi today. I had a, I got a little brief report on that. I didn't know about that meeting prior to what I found out later this morning. I would have gone to Malden. I would have sat there. And if they had the three minutes that they allowed everybody to speak, I would have spoken and brought up some of my issues, the $450,000 in unemployment last year, the million plus in unassigned or unclassified dollars. These aren't Malden's dollars, these are our dollars. And I hate to get on my soapbox, I know Russ is doing the best job he can, but there was a lot of stuff going on in this district that frankly, Desi should be absolutely ashamed of. I'm going to leave it at that. If anyone has anything else, I'd like to call for the adjournment. All in favor? Thank you.